It is 6:01 on March 15, 2022. I'll call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting this evening? Seeing none, I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda actually is approval of minutes, but there are no minutes for approval this evening. So we move to the next item on the agenda, which is to consider approval of the special one-day license to Raymond Estes on behalf of Hingham Sports Partnership, Inc. for Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Night 2022 to be held at the Loring Theater on April 3, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. So for comedy night, we'll begin with Ray Estes, and perhaps you'll even begin with a joke to get us going for the comedy night. What do you say, Ray?
I have no jokes.
Okay, so if you could just explain what is being contemplated for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Ray Estes, 924 Hill Street, speaking on behalf of the Hingham Sports Partnership. For many years, long before I became a member of the Board of the Sports Partnership, one of the ways that HSP raised funds to fulfill its mission was an annual comedy night. This is something that was done five or six years in a row. I think the last time was 2015, where they bring in professional comedians, do a live show at the Loring Theater, and then adjourn to TOSCA for dinner. Typically between 200 and 270 guests in the past. And we had planned this event two years ago for March of 2020. And unfortunately, due to the pandemic, had to cancel about 10 days for the scheduled event date. So we had actually applied for it and secured a beer and wine license for the Loring Theater, as had been done historically, in order just to serve, you know, the guests attending the show, to have a drink or two while they're while they're enjoying the show, and then we move on to the restaurant for dinner. So that's really it. The license is just for service at the Loring Theater.
Great, thank you. And it should be a great event. Liz Klein, do you have any questions about this?
Hi, Ray. Thank you. I am familiar with the event and all the great work the Hingham Sports Partnership does, so no questions there specifically. Just would love to hear if Chief Jones has any concerns about the event or parking specifically downtown.
Sure. Chief?
Sure. Good evening. So I spoke to Mr. Estes. Like he mentioned, they have had this event in the past. There has not been any issues at their previous events. I spoke with the Selectman's Office regarding the permit, and they relayed to them that my only request is they have a police detail due to it being at the Loring Hall, and they don't have an issue with that at all. So beyond that, I don't have any issue just for having the detail there at Loring during the event.
Great, thank you. No other questions, Joe. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
I've attended the event in the past. I know that it was kind of suspended during COVID, but I'm very familiar with it. So I have no questions. Great event put on by a great organization. So best of luck with it, Ray. Thank you.
Thank you. There are tickets available.
Yes, this agenda item reminded me I need to get one. So thank you for that.
So Ray, this is an opportunity to inform the public how to get tickets.
Yes, so you can go on the Internet to hinghamssports.com, and there is a registration link that will take you to a registration, and you can either pay with credit card, which fulfills your registration, or you can send a check if you prefer, and there are instructions and an address for that method of payment. So tickets have been on sale for two or three weeks now, and they are going fast, but there are some still available. So please get your tickets while you can.
And again, the event is on April 3.
That's correct.
Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on the Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Night for 2022? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I take the motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Raymond Estes on behalf of Hingham Sports Partnership Incorporated for Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Night 2022 to be held at the Loring Theater on April 3, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It is approved, Ray. We all look forward to seeing you that evening.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the special one-day license to Kevin McDevitt on behalf of Hingham Youth Hockey for the Hingham Youth Hockey fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Community Center on April 2, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is Kevin on the line?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you are. I hear, but don't see you. Do you want to explain what the event is about?
Absolutely. This is an annual event for Hingham Youth Hockey. Didn't happen last year. Or maybe the year before, actually, now that I say it, trying to remember the timing. Maybe we got it in right before everything shut down in the pandemic the previous year. But it's our big fundraiser for the year. Typically, it's parents or friends of parents who come out for the event. We try to schedule it around the end of the season. Most of the hockey teams are either wrapped up or wrapping up in the next week or so. We do a number of auction items that people donate to raise money for just general expenses, but typically it goes towards uniforms. Sometimes we buy goalie pads, things like that. So we can raise as much as, you know, $10,000, $15,000 on the night, depending how we do on auction items. So it's really a big event for us. We really use the funds, or we can use them because we essentially break even in a given year between all of the money that we take in through fees and and through what we raise for fundraising, and most of it goes back out the door, like I said, in terms of uniforms and ice time, which has gotten really expensive. So anyway, we're looking for a beer and wine license. We've hired two bartenders. They have all the correct certifications. They would be serving to the people there. It's cash bar. And we did, I think we already arranged for a police detail, so what other information could I provide about the event?
No, I mean, that was a good description. You're having live music as well, is that correct?
Yeah, that's our intent. To be completely honest, I don't have anyone hired yet, but we're still looking for someone. We think we'll just have a, like a solo performer, maybe acoustic guitar and singing, because it's a pretty mellow crowd.
Yep. Well, there may be some musicians on the Select Board who could show up and volunteering. So we'll ask around.
Happy to have them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so Chief Jones, I see you signed off on this application as well? Any concerns that you need to express?
No, that's correct. I signed off on it, and some of the last ones, just as he stated, request for a police detail at the event.
Do you have any concerns about music and noise?
I don't. From his description, it doesn't sound like that will be an issue outside of the community center.
Right. I agree. Liz, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
And Bill?
No questions. Good luck, Kevin.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that have questions on the application? I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to accept a motion on the Hingham Youth Hockey fundraiser.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kevin McDevitt on behalf of Hingham Youth Hockey for the Hingham Youth Hockey fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Community Center on April 2, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It is approved, and Kevin, we wish you the best.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Triple B, which was the zoning bylaw requirements for accessory uses. The Select Board voted on this at our prior meeting. And at the time, I had understood that this was actually an amendment to the warrant article, and I was wrong. It was simply an amendment to the recommended motion. So when I had proposed that we open the warrant, insert the new insert the new warrant article, and then close the warrant, that was inappropriate since there was actually the original warrant article is what was to be included, and there was only a change to the recommended motion. So to correct that, we need to do a new vote to reinsert the original zoning article Triple B as originally filed on December 1, 2021 by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So Liz or Bill, did either of you have a question on this?
No, no questions.
This is really just a procedural matter. Any member of the public have a question on this? So then I would accept the motion.
I'd make a motion, open the town meeting warrant and reinsert the original zoning article Triple B as filed on December 1, 2021 by the Zoning Board of Appeals, back into the warrant and to close the warrant.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Approved. The next item is a discussion and potential vote to include a debt exclusion question on the ballot for the upcoming Town of Hingham 2022 Annual Election regarding the design and construction of a new town pool at the South Shore Country Club. And for this presentation, I will turn it over to Tom and Michelle, and I know it builds on the prior discussion we've had at other Select Board meetings concerning the design of the pool. We've seen extensive documents on this. We've heard from members of the community. And this is now the next step. So Tom, I'll turn it to you first.
Great. Thank you very much, Joe. And as you said, as you guys may recall, the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, the Select Board did vote, in fact, unanimous favorable action on Article Q back in January. However, tonight, we have to have a discussion on our plan for a debt exclusion to finance the project. The state has a formal process for the town to follow to pass a debt exclusion, and Michelle has a few slides that will help explain the process, as well as the town's financial review to determine the appropriate financing mechanism. John Coffin is also here. If we have any legal questions need that anyone has for John, John is here. And with that, I think I'll just turn it over to Michelle, who will walk us through her presentation.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Can everyone see this okay?
Yep.
Yes. All right. So tonight, in this conversation, we're going to talk, do a brief overview of the debt exclusion process in Massachusetts. Talk about the different town pool funding sources or options that we have and the financial analysis that Tom mentioned that's leading us to our recommendation to pursue a debt exclusion for this project. We'll look at the projected tax impact of the project if funded that way, and then we'll also end with the proposed ballot question that we're asking you to consider this evening. So in Massachusetts, everyone talks a lot about Proposition 2 and 1/2, and there are two general type of Prop 2 and 1/2 ballot questions that communities consider from time to time. One is overrides that we've talked about a lot that pertains to the operating budget. But when we talk about capital projects, often towns choose to pursue debt exclusions. Debt exclusions are temporary property tax increases that are funding a specific capital project or projects. Those amounts, the debt service for the project is raised through property taxes, and those amounts will fall off people's property bills when the debt for the project is retired. So that's what it means by a temporary tax increase for the life of the project. A two-thirds vote of the Select Board is required to place a debt exclusion question on the ballot. And then for the project to be approved, it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting and a majority vote on the ballot. The Department of Revenue has a pretty helpful guide that they publish. It's available online that walks through all of the different procedures related to these Prop 2 and 1/2 ballot questions. They recommend, there's very specific question language that we have to use when looking at a debt exclusion ballot, and this is something that we can add to the municipal election that's coming up. We could also choose to do a special election, but we're not recommending that in this case because we can just add it to the municipal election in a few weeks. When looking at the pool project in general, the project estimate right now is $7.9 million. It's really the project amount that is driving our recommendation to use a debt exclusion. You can see here that there are a number of funding sources or options for this project. The one that we're recommending is the debt exclusion, which means borrowing for this project on top of the tax levy. Another option would be borrowing inside the tax levy, which is called non-excluded debt. And in the next few slides, we'll walk through our analysis that shows that we just don't have capacity inside the tax levy to absorb the debt service associated with this project. Another potential funding source would be unassigned fund balance. We have talked before about our recommended or proposed use of fund balance over the next few years. And that use includes, in part, balancing the budget this year, most likely doing some end-of-year transfers this town meeting, especially when it comes to storms and snow and ice. We've talked about funding fire capital needs in many of the fire stations, in funding the high school tennis court replacement, as well as the main one is offsetting the tax impact of the large capital projects this fall, which is Foster School and the Public Safety Facility, and that's a use of unassigned fund balance that the town has talked about for several years. So those uses are proposed plan for fund balance as opposed to spending $8 million of fund balance on this one project. There's also potential funding from the Community Preservation Act, and the project proponents have received or have a commitment from the CPC of $550,000 towards this project. So if that's approved at town meeting this spring, the project cost will be reduced by that amount. There's also a potential for private fundraising to help offset the impact of this project. So when we were doing our analysis of the debt service and talking about borrowing seems like the best option for this project, and then the question was really, can we fit it inside the levy, or do we have to go on top of that? In looking at the levy, we started with our debt service schedule. So the gray bars on this graph are the debt service costs that are non-excluded. So within the levy over the next, it's showing a 10-year timeframe right here. This is long-term debt that's locked in, things that we've already issued long-term debt for. As you know, typically, every year, we end up doing some short-term borrowings. So the yellow bars here represent debt service, projected debt service on our current bands, the bond anticipation notes. You may be familiar with, the town typically borrows short-term for the first two years, and then we roll it into a longer-term borrowing. So the yellow represents four projects that we've already borrowed for in the past, that we have to make some sort of interest or principal and interest payment on over the next few years. Those four projects are the purchase of 335 Lincoln Street, the land for the Public Safety Facility, the High School Clarestory Window Project, the townwide fiber optic project where we're replacing all of the fiber that supports our IT systems. And then a fire engine, a replacement of a fire engine from a few years ago. So the yellow is is the anticipated payments for those four projects. When you add that on top of what's already in the debt service schedule, you can kind of see here from FY '21 through about '27-ish that we're at capacity, that that debt service, those debt service costs are projected to be even. And then as projects retire going forward, there's more room created. But please keep in mind that at some point, all the yellow bars will become gray, will go long-term, and those will be locked in as debt service. And then typically, every spring, we do add more yellow bars. We borrow for more projects at every annual town meeting. Speaking of which, this spring, we anticipate we are asking for authorization to borrow for three projects this spring. One is the PRS windows. Because we have a lot of other funding sources for this project, including MSBA funds, mitigation funds from the Alliance Project, as well as about $1 million from previously completed capital projects. The actual amount that we anticipate borrowing for the PRS windows is relatively small. So you can see the green bars here represent the anticipated debt service for that project. The first two years are always much smaller because those are the interest-only payments, and then some principal repayment starts happening in year three. The other two projects that we're asking for approval for this spring in terms of borrowing within the levy are the pre-construction documents for the Foster and Public Safety Facility projects. You can see that in the red bars, that represents the interest only on those payments. It only shows up here for the first two years because we anticipating rolling those costs into the larger debt exclusion asks related to Foster and Public Safety Construction in the fall. So the town would, we anticipate that the town would pay the first two years of interest-only payments in '24 and '25, and then when we issue the long-term debt, those payments will move up to the excluded debt line and will be on the tax bills as well. So this is kind of assuming that everything gets approved this spring. These are our debt service projections, and we don't see any room to fit the pool project in on top of these debt service projections. If I do add the pool on top of it in the blue bars, this represents a 20-year repayment of the pool project costs with level principal repayments like the other projects. You can see again the interest-only payments in '24 and '25, and then some sizable principal and interest repayment starting in '26. This is the reason why we are recommending doing this project as a debt exclusion because of the size of the project. I'll come back to this if there's any questions. I'm going to jump to another graph now that is not related to debt service. It's actually looking at the tax impact of the pool project. So if we do pursue a debt exclusion for the pool project, it means that we would be asking people to pay taxes on top of their normal tax bill to support this project. If we look at the median assessed property value in town, which is about $703,000, the green bars here represent that person or that property owner's property taxes over the next 10 fiscal years, and the green is the normal Prop 2 and 1/2 growth, as well as the CPA growth. The blue numbers and the blue bars on top of that represent the cost to them of the pool project. So the first year that it would impact their bill is FY '24 at about $49 for that entire year, and over time, that decreases slightly over time. This was a 20-year repayment, so after 20 years, that blue bar, blue number, would drop off the tax bills entirely. And then finally, this is the proposed ballot question for the pool project. Like I said, it's very specific language that's recommended or prescribed by the Department of Revenue. There's, if you'll note, there's no amount that appears in the question. We've got some previous examples that we've used in the past, but this is the ballot question we would ask that be added to the municipal election this coming April or May. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Michelle, that was very thorough. That was good. Let me just ask, start out with two questions. So as I understand the procedure, this would be a vote to place it on the ballot. And even though a town meeting approval is required to go forward, it would be on the ballot whether or not it receives the town meeting approval. Is that correct?
That's correct, because we're proposing to do it together with the municipal election. And the timeline that the town clerk needs to place it on the ballot wouldn't allow us to pull it back off. Those ballots would have been printed and ready, you know, for the week after town meeting. If we wanted to completely separate it, we could do a special election and wait to see what the town meeting did, then call a special election just for this project, but we didn't think that was necessary.
Right. So if the town meeting did not approve this expenditure, it would be on the ballot, but there'd be notices posted saying, "Not a valid ballot question" because it's moot. We simply wouldn't have time to reprint the ballot. Is that correct?
That's right. And maybe John can weigh in a little bit on this, but even if people answer that question on the ballot, it wouldn't be it wouldn't be valid. It wouldn't carry any weight towards the project being completed because it also requires the town meeting vote.
Right. So I've asked John the question, and so even if people voted on the ballot for an item that did not pass town meeting, the ballot vote would not be tallied and would have no impact at all.
That's right.
And my second question, you mentioned in passing that the possible, that the cost might possibly be mitigated by private funding. And one of our means of encouraging private funding is by allowing naming rights. And so I know we have an initiative to revise the naming bylaw to allow certain naming rights. Do you, or I'm not sure who will be the appropriate person, might have an update on where the naming bylaw recommendations stand?
I know that I can answer that, Joe. Well, sort of. I know that the Naming Bylaw Committee has held several meetings. They are not prepared with a recommended article for this spring's town meeting. However, they might in fact be ready for the fall, or hopefully at the latest spring in 2023.
So there is no initiative planned for the upcoming annual town meeting to modify the naming bylaw?
That's right.
Okay, so something that we absolutely, you know, I want to make sure is being properly considered, and hopefully it can be addressed at the special town meeting that we are planning in the fall. And with that, I'm sorry?
Would you mind if I added to that?
Please.
To your point, if there is private fundraising that comes in for this project, or the CPC money is approved, that would just reduce the impact on taxpayers shown here and make it even smaller of an impact on the tax bills.
Yes. With that, I will turn it over to Liz Klein for her questions and comments.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Michelle. That was a great presentation. I know we were struggling with how to explain this the best way, so thank you for that. Just to follow up on your last point. So if there was private funding or even the CPC, which we're hoping will be approved, the $550,000, the tax impact would decrease from here. This is the most it would be for the total project value, right?
That's right. We would only end up borrowing what we actually needed for the project, and then typically, we would borrow short-term, like, you know, based on what we're spending before we went long-term for the full amount. But yes, it would reduce the full amount that we needed to borrow below the $7.9 million.
Okay, great. Thank you. I really don't have any questions. I just, you know, want to stress that I fully support this project, and we've kind of gone through lots of different scenarios and kind of exhausted different options, the best way to fund this. And I think, you know, we were just kind of going through, again, all the scenarios, and not sure how it would play out, but after after looking at it closely, that I think this is the best option to do the excluded debt. So thank you for explaining it so well.
Bill?
Well, thank you for the presentation, Michelle, and I, like Liz, I also fully support this project, and I have I don't have a lot of questions. I've spoken with Tom and Michelle in detail about the different options available as well, so I'm familiar with where we are with this. I'm assuming you don't have it, Michelle, but, you know, obviously CPC recommendations are usually adopted by the meeting. Do you have a graph that would show if the $550 is approved, what the median assessed property value would be in terms of the tax impact with the $550?
I don't have it in this presentation, but I can do that for you and send it after. This is based on the John Asher financial model that he prepared for our sustainable For our sustainable budget task force, so I could run those numbers and send it to the board after the meeting.
Okay, I'm just, you know, it's, it's a good assumption that it will be approved. Obviously, we don't know that, but to give taxpayers a good idea. Because it will be less, obviously. But again, fully supportive of the project, look forward to supporting it at town meeting and at the ballot. Um, I think it's. An important, um, an important thing for our community to have, and um, as I've said at previous meetings. Um, it's, it's something that, um, I appreciate Christine's work on this project, appreciate the committee's work on this project and. Look forward to supporting it going forward, so thank you very much.
Tom and Michelle, this uh is sort of a procedural question. Um, my understanding is that moving forward with this vote. Does not. Uh, circumvent or preempt the local board approvals that would be required. Whether it's the planning boards, zoning board, any, any, any other applicable board. Is, is that a correct statement?
It is.
Uh, so that this is, this is a funding question. I also support this project. I know we've heard from some residents who had reservations. Uh, and we've encouraged them that the particular concerns that they voiced. The time to voice them really would be when it goes before the various uh planning organizations, planning boards of the town. So uh those will still uh move forward. That this, this vote is, does not determine those four actions. So with that, I am ready to accept comments or questions from members of the public. And I see Christine has raised her hand as fast as anyone I've seen raise their hand before, so please. The floor is yours. If, just make sure you give your uh name and address.
Sure, it's Christine Smith, Two Park Circle. Just wanted to make sure that my app, that my raise hand function was working, so. That I was speedy, so um. Now, we've all been talking about this project for five years, and I can't thank uh the board enough for your unanimous support as well as the. Unanimous support of the advisory committee. I think we've done a nice job of sort of matching the wants and the needs that have been developed over the last. Five years or so, um, and to me, this is just, we have so many projects facing this town. This is a nice project to begin with. Um, it's, you know, it's cradle to grave. We'll be able to accommodate, you know, uh babies to the senior, to, to, to senior citizens in this town and. For, you know, about forty six bucks a year, I hope people, you know, find that that's um a reasonable amount for. You know, the, the asset that, that this town can provide um to everybody. And um also to let people know that because we're doing it this way, we're not interfering with the other projects. We're not touching ton uh. Fun balance. There's a lot of reasons um that I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, this makes a lot of sense. But people have to understand that, you know, two thirds is a, is, is not easy at town meeting. It's not a majority at town meeting. It's a two thirds vote, so I encourage people to. To come and, and, and express your opinion and please vote yes. Um, and the privacy of the ballot box is always a risk, but I think a majority vote. We've got a lot of people that I think have been waiting for, for this for a long time, and with the South Shore Country Club celebrating its hundredth anniversary, what a, what a perfect time to. Kind of invest and, and get behind this asset, so um. I thank you, um, I encourage people to, to, to show up and uh I'd love to be swimming in this pool in twenty twenty three, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from members of the public? I am seeing none. So I am prepared to accept the motion on the debt exclusion question for the ballot.
I will make a motion to include the following question on the ballot for the upcoming Town of Hingham twenty twenty two annual election. The ballot question, shall the town of Hingham be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half? So-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued for the design and construction of a new pool. At the South Shore Country Club, two seventy four South Street, Hingham, Massachusetts.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe? Hi. So you get more than two thirds, you get an anonymous, unanimous vote here. So we move on to the next step. Good to see you, Christine. So the next item we have on our agenda, which will be a joint session with the advisor committee, will not take place until seven PM. So I am going to advance. To uh the remaining items on our schedule. Uh, we have no appointments, so I will now ask for. Members of the public who may have comments on items not on the agenda. So if you've got a comment not on the agenda, now is the time to raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll move to town administrator select board reports, starting with Mr. Mayo.
And nothing tonight, thank you, Joe.
Okay. Michelle?
Nothing for me, thanks, Joe.
And Art?
Uh, nothing this evening, Joe.
Liz?
Um, I guess just a, a couple things. One, a reminder, I know you mentioned it last week, Joe. That we are still accepting applications for the Human Rights Commission. Seat spots, uh, the deadline has been extended till March twenty fifth. Um, and also, I, the Commission on Disabilities has been working with um. The fire and police departments to update um a registration form, so that will be going live. We'll have more information on that, but that's something to help um residents in town.
Great. Bill?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
And I also have nothing this evening. So uh, at this point. I am going to uh. Have the select board go into recess until seven PM. I have seven PM, uh, so I will call the select board meeting out of recess. And I will invite the members of the advisory committee uh to call themselves to order. Julie?
I don't have a quorum yet for advisory committee. Need one more.
We can hold off for a sec.
Okay, we've got a quorum. I call the advisory committee meeting for March fifteenth, twenty twenty two to order. At seven oh one PM, adopting the remote meeting, open meeting law language, which was read earlier by the select board chair. At the beginning of this left board meeting. Advisory committee members present are Bob Curly, Nancy McDonald. Dave Anderson, Andy McElany. Dabeline Cooper, Kristen Degowski. Tina Sherwood. Sarah Amelia. And I think that's it, and Caitlin Kirk.
And yourself.
And Julie Strahan.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so the first item on our joint session. Is to consider Article CCC zoning bylaw, special permits and site plan review procedures. So I see Kevin, uh, Kevin Ellis is here. I believe Emily Wentworth is here as well. So I will ask. Kevin, uh, if you would like to start, or if you want Emily to start, or if there's some other procedure you'd like to follow.
Uh, thank you very much, Jeremy Fisher. Um, again, my name is Kevin Ellis. I'm the chair of the planning board this year, so thank you so much for having me. Um. Usually like to let Emily talk because she is definitely better at this than I, but um, I'll get some brief background on this and I'm happy to entertain any questions, so. Article CCC is.
If, before you start, uh, do you have a quorum of uh, uh, planning board members here?
Uh, I believe I am the only planning board member here. We just got last night, so they. Okay. All that, excited about coming to me in a row.
Wait, just checking, sorry.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so Article CCC is um focused on site plan, um, review procedures and special perm procedures. So this is a pretty comprehensive and wholesale, um, uh, reconfiguring of the process for submittal, for review. And um for kind of, um, you know, issuing those special permits and site plan review. Um, you know, hearings, um, but the board held, I think, eight public hearings on this, um, between January and March. We did approximately seventeen hours of discussion, uh, per Emily. Um, we received a significant amount of input from, you know, other stakeholders in town, uh, business owners, um, council, staff. Some residents, um, and in particular, we worked closely or received significant input from, um, Preya Howell, who put forth, um, the Citizens' petition for. The tree preservation bylaw, and you'll see in reviewing this bylaw that we incorporated substantial provisions in the um. Article CCC of the tree preservation bylaw to the point that the board voted last night on to take no action on the tree preservation bylaw because of, you know. In streamlining this process, we incorporated the provisions from Priya's proposed amendment, and I'll let her speak to that. More generally, um, what this does is it, um, it, it changes the process. For submitting the special permits and the site plan review, um, it changes the way, you know, it reorganizes the criteria of the board. You know, on evaluating hearing the special permits and undergoing site plan review process. Partly to organize it for applicants when they submit the materials and partly to help the board streamline its review and target more specific areas and more robust questions. As I mentioned earlier, it incorporates significant aspects of the tree preservation bylaws, the point that, um, you know, when people enter into the site plan review process. You know, um, as to, um. You know, as to some of the tree preservation aspects, you know, they'll, they'll encounter them when they enter into the site plan review process. And, you know, with the goal, um, you know, as the town kind of, you know, voted for of, you know, preserving additional trees and um creating kind of a greener Hingham. Um, from our perspective, this differentiates the um role of the planning board and the zoning board a little more efficiently, so the zoning board can proceed without being held up by the planning board. So it allows the zoning board to issue its independent permits and the planning board to issue its independent permits, which you think from an applicant's perspective is really helpful? In the sense that they're not waiting for one board to do something and then to go to meet with another board. And uh, the zoning board is not waiting for the planning board to act in order to um initiate its hearings. I'm happy to answer more detailed questions. Um, you can see that this is quite a long article because it really does kind of go through the wholesale changes here. So I don't mean to gloss the substance of it, but I don't know, uh, you know, how detailed, Joe, you want me to get into on this. I mean, obviously you do have personally some background here, but.
Um, well, I was gonna ask Emily to give us a um. Uh, a summary of the highlights, if, if that's appropriate. And then I know Susan, uh, Susan Murphy is also on the line as the real estate counsel. Uh, I don't know if Susan wants to add anything after Emily has a chance to speak.
Sure, um, yeah, I'm happy to, you know, either write, read through all eighteen pages or. The bullet point.
Just for the record, if you could identify your position in the town.
Sure, uh, and I'm the community, community planning director, excuse me. Um, so Kevin's touched on a lot of these themes, I'll, I so excuse any redundancies in the presentation, but. Um, some of the more significant procedural updates um that have been incorporated into the recommended motion. Um, are that site plan review applications would all now require public notice. Um, in part, that's because the triggers have been updated, so that the planning board will be focused on those applications. That are, are likely to be more impactful to abutters or neighbors. Um, so this was really seen as more of a, a transparency improvement. There are updated and clearer submittal requirements that are better related to clear. And um. Improved design and performance standards. Uh, that will help the board in its admin, well, it'll help applicants know what is expected of them through a site plan review application. Um, but it will also help the board um in its administration of the bylaw. Um, and then there were some minor cleanups to um certain special permit requirements. And specifically the approval criteria for parking determinations um that are also issued by the planning board. Um, Kevin mentioned that. While site plan review will still be required for any application before the zoning board. That requires a certain type of special permit. The two processes will no longer be tied together, so the, the zoning board can act. In advance of the planning board's typically more detailed review through site plan applications. It, and then finally, um, there is a requirement similar to the public notice for a site plan review application. That the um planning board's site plan approval be recorded at the registry of deeds. This is again, um, to create greater transparency, so any um future. Owners of the property will understand um expectations or, or ongoing obligations of the board's permit. Um, and then finally, I, we've mentioned this a bit, but there were some modifications of the. Triggers for a site plan review application, um specifically what we have today, which is. A, a, a trigger related to um non-residential construction. That's estimated to cost more than twenty thousand dollars. That trigger has been removed um in the recommended motion. Um, in part, that's because a lot of those applications were for interior work. Um, in existing commercial um properties. And the board most frequently waived those um applications, so it'll remove potential delays with. That type of work while, again, keeping the board's focus on projects that are likely to be more meaningful. To the community or a neighborhood. So we're, we're thrilled we got there after lots of dialogue. You know, it was, it was great to have the board um vote unanimously to recommend adoption last night.
Emily, thank you. Let me, let me just start with some um questions and I'll turn it over to members of the select board, then we'll move over to the advisory committee. I've heard, I think many of us have heard. Concerns from residents and also prospective residents and uh. People who want to do projects that the permitting process is cumbersome and it needs to be streamlined. Is, what is before us? Does that advance the streamlining process? Do you agree it needs to be streamlined? And I'm just wondering if, if this is helpful for those residents who want to move forward with projects and often find it either confusing, cumbersome. Or, or otherwise difficult to go through the permitting process.
So the, the intent of the overall article um has all along been to streamline our current permitting processes. Um, for homeowners, it's not gonna change the type of application that requires a site plan review. Those all relate to um land disturbance primarily. What it will help with is the, the readability of the, our current zoning regulations. So it is much clearer what is required for particular um types of applications. For those that are um residential in nature, they most often will be hitting a more minor form of. Of application, so there are now different um submittal requirements for more major um or significant. Uh, development versus a more typical single family, two family type of addition, possibly reconstruction. So those applicants um do not have um as many submittal requirements. You know, in example, they won't have to submit a traffic analysis um or potentially a full-blown stormwater report.
Yep. So just picking up on, on the question of sort of minor versus. Less minor um modifications, sometimes applicants are confused as to what, what a minor mod is. Does that, you think? Explain more clearly in the existing, in the proposed regulations?
Yeah, there, there are two different concepts in there that use the word minor. Um, the first is that there are newly created. Minor and major submittal requirements.
Yep.
So, so that's what I had just referred to. There's also a concept in there where the planning board may waive. Um, uh, site plan review in the event that it, it represents a very modest. Or um insignificant change to a plan they had previously approved.
Okay. Is, um, what's being proposed? Does it create risks that there might be inconsistencies between the decisions of the ZBA? And the planning board?
Uh, no, we don't believe so. Um, you know, we've got significant experience now with the, you know, the way site plan review and special permits. Have worked between the two boards. There already is a pop process in place where, you know, the zoning board can refer back. To the planning board any conditions that it feels may not be appropriate. This, this wouldn't do the same, but applicants, you know, we, we never really had to utilize that provision in the bylaw because the boards more or less were viewing things, you know, in their own, within their jurisdiction, but overall in the same manner, favorably, not favorably. So applicants will be expected to comply with, you know, all conditions imposed by whichever board. We did talk during the process about, you know, the potential for their, let's say, the zoning board to impose conditions related to hours of operation, you know, so this business can stay open till 10:00 PM. But the planning board may be looking at it through a type of parking determination and find that, you know, it would be more, more appropriate to have that business close at 8:00 PM. The applicant has the option of either complying with the stricter of those two or returning to the other board to try to modify conditions that are, that have been imposed.
Got it. Just, just two more questions. First, is there anything in what's being proposed that modifies or reduces notice that will be provided to abutters?
No, actually, it only increases notice. Presently, all of those single family and two family type of land disturbance, it's like plan review applications are not noticed and this, this amendment would require notice.
Okay. And final question, can you just briefly explain the process in, in what's being proposed for identifying protected trees?
Yeah, sure. It depends on the properties. So on non-residential, non-single family, two family properties, it's any tree over six inches that is non-invasive. It's a native species. And then on residential properties, it, that is reduced to only those trees greater than six inches within a tree yard, which is 10 feet from all property bounds. Or any significant tree, which is a tree that is greater than 30 inches in caliber, that could be anywhere on the lot.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. At this point, turn it over to Liz Klein.
Great. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Emily, for going through that. And thank you, Kevin. It sounds like it was quite a thorough process with, with lots of community input and public feedback as well as the boards. And I certainly appreciate it. It sounds like you worked really hard to streamline the process, making it more efficient and removing dependencies. I know Joe asked a little bit about the dependency between the planning board and the ZBA. Could you just speak to how the conservation commission is impacted as well?
Yeah. So in terms of conditions or conflicts, you know, that are imposed between now all three of these boards, it'll work the same with the commission as it would, you know, between the planning board and the zoning board. So an applicant has to comply with all conditions of approval. And if there is any conflict, which whichever one is is more strict. But the, the one change in the zoning bylaw that could potentially, well, wouldn't necessarily affect the commission per se, but it would change something that exists presently. There is an exemption from site plan review for any application that is wholly in the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. Based on recent experience with a handful of applications, it didn't necessarily seem appropriate to maintain that exemption because there may be projects, you know, that are jurisdictional for the commission that also have impacts related to traffic or design, potentially lighting that, that the commission doesn't have the authority to review. So those, if they hit the site plan review triggers would require an application to the planning board.
Okay, understood. Great. Thank you.
Bill, our former member of the planning board.
Thank you. A couple, a couple of comments. I've looked at this article pretty extensively. I've had a multiple conversations with Susan, a couple with Kevin, a couple with Priya Howell as well, I think was on the call. So it's my comments are, first and foremost, I think one of the most important aspects of this article is that our site plan review criteria is now going to be a standalone permit. And, you know, one of the most cumbersome aspects of our zoning process was in 2005, we introduced site plan review to be binding criteria on our zoning board. And at the time when it was introduced, it was introduced by a committee called the zoning permit study committee. And I think historically it was probably needed at the time, and I was a member of that committee, as was Susan, and I think Mary Power was on that committee and Victor Baltara and many others. And it was needed then in 2005, but that time has passed. And now we don't need that. So this is a really good change to have this done. And the problem with that was that the zoning board could not do its work and could not address these applications and help these applicants out because they were had to wait for the planning board to work through its process. So this change now makes it easier for applicants to work through the process and allows the zoning board to move forward with its, with its work and does not make applicants wait, wait for the planning board. So the, the binding part of that procedure has now been removed, which, which is, which is a great change. So that's a good thing. Some other highlights here, which I think are worth noting are the performance standards have been enhanced. I think that's the great change. The notification requirements have been improved. Always great for abutters to have improved notification requirements. Removing the $20,000 requirement to wait, you know, getting rid of that for site plan review. That removes a burdensome, a burdensome part of our site plan review criteria. And equally is important is that the tree preservation protections that have been added to it. Now I said all along that I, I've always thought that our site plan review criteria is where we should best address and improve our tree protection concerns that we've had in town, either through a subdivision rules and regulations or site plan review criteria. So I want to thank a couple of people for their work on this article, you know, first Emily and Susan, who did great work in revising this article and getting to it. I want to thank Kevin for his leadership of the board and the entire planning board, but Kevin's leadership over the past two years has been wonderful. And I want to thank Priya and her committee for the great work they've done in bringing this matter forward. So it's a great article. And, you know, some of the, some of the things that were in change with this article, you know, I, I think that I know that other communities, you know, don't have a special permit A2 or special permit A3, and we kept that. And I think that's good that we kept that because our community is a little unique and a little different. So at the end of the day, this is a great article and I appreciate the hard work that went into it and really happy with it as a former member. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And Julie, I will now turn this over to you and the advisory committee.
Thanks, Joe. And thank you, Kevin and Emily. And I want to thank our AdCom liaison team, Andy, Matt and Brenda for working on this article. And I wanted to just mention that we're going after this hearing, we're going to take our meeting back to an AdCom meeting and we're going to discuss the comment and vote on this article. But in the meantime, if there are any advisory committee members who have questions, go ahead and I'll call on you. Anyone have any questions or comments about Article CCC? Okay, so now at this time, we'll take it up in our own meeting. Thank you.
Julie, I've never seen the advisory committee so silent. Wow.
I think we're just all really tired, Joe.
That was not a challenge, by the way. It was an observation. So this is.
It was all explained very well. So thank you.
So this is not an article that the select board would be voting on. So I will now ask members of the public if they have comments or questions on Article CCC. I am not seeing any comments or questions from members of the public. So we will then move on to Article DDD, which is a citizen's position for the concerning tree preservation change to the zoning bylaw. And I believe Priya Howell is the citizen bringing forth that petition. So I would turn this over to Priya at this point.
Thanks, Joe. Priya Howell, 26 South Pratt Drive. I'll just start by also thanking Kevin and the rest of the planning board for recognizing the merit in the tree preservation bylaw and folding it into the proposed amendments that we were just talking about. Yeah, I really appreciate that they welcomed my comments and responded to a number of points that I raised. And I think what we have in CCC is a, is a great first step. But I also think that there is more that we can do, and I, I think we should do that as soon as possible. As many of you heard me say, I think, you know, the real heart of the tree preservation bylaw is the tree fund. Developers, no matter how hard they might try, they can't always replace all of the trees that they take down in connection with a project. Because if you have to clear, you know, trees to make space for a house, a driveway, a front yard, a backyard, you'll be limited in what you can replant. Which is why I think, you know, we really need a tree fund. It's, it's basically a tool that allows the town to impose the cost of replanting trees. So that we're not in a net loss tree position every year, meaning we aren't losing more trees than we are planting on the projects that are responsible for the tree loss. So without that, if we want to replace the trees, we lose to development every year, we have to impose the cost on taxpayers. And I can certainly think of better ways for us to use tax dollars. So, you know, that being said, I do believe that planning will be studying this and will hopefully build the case for adding a tree fund soon. And because I do really think that this is a great first step for the town, I'm intending to submit a request to withdraw DDD tomorrow. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity to just one more time educate everyone on, you know, the benefits of the tree fund. So we can socialize it more and be ready for hopefully that to be brought to the future town meeting. You know, next year, hopefully.
Great. Thank you. And we do appreciate not only your comments here this evening, but the work throughout the year. Because these things do take time, they take study. And you're, you're really putting in the effort. So much appreciated. Liz, any comments or questions?
No questions, but thank you, Priya, for all of your work and continued work on this. I look forward to seeing what, what we come up with for next year. And I am also very glad that there are the tree preservation, you know, inclusions in the Article CCC. I do agree that that's a great first step, but thank you for all of your work.
Bill?
I know questions. My thanks to Priya and her committee for their work.
Thank you. Julie, advisory committee.
Do any advisory committee members have any questions right now? Well, as I said, we'll talk about the recommended motion and the comment in the hearing that we're having right after this. So thank you.
Great.
Bob? You're on mute.
You're muted, Bob.
You know, I had to get my host would like me to unmute. And partly because of Joe's prior challenge.
No, Bob.
I, I wanted to say that I think free, I started out as the liaison with Priya three years ago, two years ago. And I want to commend her for all the work she's done over the years that has now brought this to substantial fruition. And that's all I'll say at this point. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. And yeah, I think it was 2019 when it started. Thanks, Bob. And thank you, Priya. And I think that's it for advisory committee right now.
Are there members of the public with comments or questions on Article Triple D, recognizing that it is likely to be withdrawn tomorrow? I am seeing none. So at this point, I would invite the advisory committee to go into recess and then to reconvene at their chosen location.
Thanks, Joe. So the advisory committee is going into recess. We'll reconvene in the AdCom meeting Zoom link that's on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we have already handled a public comment and the town administrator select board reports. That would conclude the select board agenda as well. So I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
I.
Bill?
I.
And Joe, we are adjourned and we will be resuming tomorrow evening.